Michael, you can go ahead and pull yourself up.
Okay, it's 6:30, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is our regular session, March 13th, 2023, at 6:30 PM at the Rosenberg Center. Thank you for being here. At this time, I'm gonna ask if Councilmember Redfield will give our certification voice, please.
That's right. Well, thank you for today. It's been beautiful weather outside. Thank you for hearing me over. That is very nice. We're going through business to see if we can keep our focus on what's best for the city, primarily on us continuing to work in this city. If you can hear, keep your head up, keep your eyes on the road.
And my dear, stand clear of the light, please. My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the road for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. All right, the next is the mayor's announcement. And tonight, um, exciting and special time that I want to recognize our Liberty High School AA Class A wrestling team, who are our state champions, so. So I'm going to read, um, so everybody will understand what it is that they've accomplished this year. The 2023 Liberty Wrestling Team finished the year with a 37-5 record. They defeated many championship level 4A and 5A teams along the way. They opened up the season ranked fifth in 2A. By Christmas, they would be ranked first and maintain that ranking the rest of the season. The team placed third at the Maverick Duels, second at the Patriot Duels, and third at the Rant Invitational. The team finished in the top 12 at the prestigious Southern Slam Tournament that included many top teams from the southeastern United States as well as Delaware. Some of the team titles this year include Higgins County Champions, Regions AA Championships, um, AA, and I'm not sure how you do this. Do you say double A? Do you say AA? Is it double? 2A, 2A, and then there's 2A- A? Is that, uh, upper state championships and 2A- A state champions and 2A- A traditional tournament champions? The team had eight all-region wrestlers and nine all-state wrestlers. They qualified in school district record of 13 wrestlers for the state tournament. So that's pretty impressive. That shows a lot of good training. And then we had two individual champions as well. State champion individuals included sophomore JT Spence. He finished the season 56-4 with a school record tying 37 pins. JT also was also all-county, all-region, and all-state. JT is the true state champion, having recorded pins over the 5A, 4A, and 3A champion in his weight during the season. So. Our other state champion this year was Blake Chandler, a senior who won his third consecutive state title this season. Blake finished the season with a 40-3 record with 30 pins. Blake has a career record of 138-12 over his four high school seasons. Blake was all-county, all-region, all-state, as well as a north-south all-star this year. Now, if you can get the team up right here, please, and we'll get a picture with you. And maybe a picture, maybe a picture. And if council.
Good job.
It's not true, Dave. It's hard to get a deep shot in here.
Council meeting.
You want us to come out?
Yeah.
We can come out on the inside here.
All right, ready? One, two. Bye. I got it. Thank y'all so much. It's good back here.
You did good shooting.
Yeah.
Come on back. I'm trying to keep my place.
They're getting in your way, getting on your nerves.
Okay, I just wanted.
So that's a sign of some good coaching and saw some good skill there, so you're proud of them. Okay, so we're gonna move on. Next, we have a presentation by administrator Michael Calvert for the ARPA grant report. We actually talked about this a couple of months ago, and as we were, as we've been going along and using the money for things that have been approved by council, um, we felt like we need to go ahead and bring this to council. Um, we tried to do it last month, but, you know, things get in the way, so, um, prioritize it from this month. And he's not able to be here with us in person. We've got him on the screen here. He's out of town doing some training to be a better administrator, even is better than he already is. So, Michael, hey, we see you there. Can you hear us?
Hello, everyone. Uh, thanks for, for, uh, including me, even though I'm, I'm not, uh, in the city at the moment. And I guess I had to believe the mayor, which told me that no matter where I go, the council will find me. And so I do appreciate that. Uh, but no, yes, uh, that is accurate. Uh, it was one of the things where we thought, especially starting, uh, the final, um, the final third of our budget, to talk about, uh, you know, what we're doing with the ARPA money, what has been spent on, what, um, where we are, where, and what the future also holds. Um, if you guys don't mind pulling out the, um, the one that, uh, the chart that says, uh, current ARPA amount. And, uh, when doing that, what I'd like to point out, obviously, is you can see just how much ARPA money, um, we do not have spent, uh, at the moment. Um, and what I'd like, like to do, though, is if you take out the, uh, 59% that hasn't, uh, been spent yet, I'd really like to discuss the part that has been spent yet. And I'll explain, uh, the percentages that we actually, um, what it's gone to with what we have spent. Uh, for instance, um, right now, we've spent, uh, $573,285.19 of the ARPA money. That is the 41% that, uh, that you see here on the right of this chart. Um, so when you change the percentages because of that, uh, it, uh, changes, uh, both 2% to City Hall and Public Safety, both being 4.9%, Economic Development being 14.6%, and Infrastructure, so far, we've actually spent 75.6% of ARPA money on infrastructure-related projects. Uh, I think that shows, uh, a great, um, uh, strategy on spending when we do know that there are several things we might want to, uh, you know, uh, use ARPA money towards, but that, uh, the one thing that I know, uh, you guys had spoken to me about is to make sure that we definitely keep an eye on infrastructure-related projects, which we, uh, we are doing. Um, so if you look at that, again, we are at, right now, 75.6%. It goes to 31% with the current ARPA amount, because as you can see, we do have quite a bit that hasn't been spent yet. Um, and then if you go to the future ARPA amount, we expect at least with what we have right now for infrastructure, as you can see, to be at least 50% of every single thing that we spend this towards. Now, if you look, those five, or six areas that we are looking to, um, have, really, it's five if you don't count unallocated, which will generally speaking always be City Hall, Infrastructure, Public Safety, Economic Development, and Finance. It should always be most likely in one of these five. If we add or subtract one, I'll let the mayor and, and you, uh, council know, uh, right away that we've, uh, added or eliminated one of these, uh, areas. But there'll always be, at least for now, one of these five areas. So again, if you look at what we're spending, the vast majority of it is infrastructure with smaller amounts in the other four areas. Are there any, any questions that I could go along with, uh, on this? Comments, questions? Okay, and, and again, as we go forward, you, with the amount of ARPA money that still hasn't been allocated, these are things that, uh, you know, we'll be, all be discussing, the mayor and I, as well as, uh, you know, the mayor and council will be, uh, discussing some, some areas that you find important to, um, to look at here. But as always, these will all be under the strategic plan. Uh, not a dollar, uh, will be spent that, uh, isn't part of the strategic plan that you guys directed we could use ARPA money only towards that, and that, that's what we continue to be, uh, strategizing to do.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay. Is that it, Michael?
Uh, that's it for the ARPA, and again, unless there are some questions. Now, there are, uh, other, uh, things in here, like, for instance, there are some, uh, some, a little bit more detail in the back that you, you all can see. If you have any questions regarding that, feel free to reach out to me. Uh, I'll be happy to answer any more specific questions towards ARPA. This was just a basic first presentation. I know there's, uh, many more to come, and, uh, again, you might have questions that come up after this. Uh, feel free to reach out to me. I'll be happy to, to fill, uh, anyone in on where we are with the, uh, ARPA spending.
Okay, great. Thank you, Michael. We'll have you back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next is our folks that can have any speakers. We have another one. Sign up to speak. So next, we've got an approval of our minutes of February 13th, 2023 regular session. Do I have a motion to approve our minutes?
I have a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Redfield. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and I have a second by Councilmember Massey. Do I have any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving our minutes for February 13th, 2023 regular session, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. All right, on to old business. We've got second readings, our second reading of 2023-02 rezoning of old lane ordinance from 501 to 501A. And I will ask, uh, municipal court, Bailey Law, if you will please just give us a brief summary now.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me if I just speak? Um, this ordinance is rezoning from 501, which is medium-density residential, to 501A, which is medium-density and duplex-density.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve as written, second reading of 2023-02, rezoning of old lane ordinance from 501 to 501A? Have a motion. I have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Whitaker and a second by Councilmember Paget. Any discussion?
Uh, do we know what they're wanting to do with that yet?
That one is the, the plan for the, for one duplex. Yes. Am I correct on that, Bailey?
Yes.
All right. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving ordinance 2023-02, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. And the second reading of 2023-03 amending the language in manufactured print ordinance, Bailey.
Um, this is amending the language for what is allowed for exterior siding.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Shune Langdon. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second by Councilmember Whitaker. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the revision of 2020, or second reading of 2023-03, amending the language in manufactured print ordinance, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and it's unanimous. On to our second reading of 2023-04, which is the city seal. Which is what we're looking to adopt as our new city seal. Do I have a motion to approve our reading of 2023-04?
I'll have a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Massey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second by Councilmember Howell. Do I have any discussion?
Uh, I mentioned this to you earlier, and I got a response back from the citizen. I had a citizen email, and I asked if there was any opportunity to public input on the seal during the process. I actually stopped by the mayor's office today and talked to him a little while. Um, and he replied back, and he made some really good arguments that we've really missed an opportunity to get public input on something that represents the city as a whole. And based on his, his response, um, I would like to propose to table it, and he's given the opportunity of getting public input. I just think it's a lost opportunity, um, from what, you know, from his, I had access to him, I didn't follow up with that, but. He, um, he made a really good point that this is something that represents the city as a whole, and, uh, it's really a missed opportunity for us to give the community's input if we don't put it out there. It's a, it's a council vote if we don't do that, I'm fine with that. But, um, I do feel like it's a missed opportunity to put it out and get feedback from the community as a whole on something like this, which is a fairly easy thing to do. So I would like to, um, propose to table it, get public input, and if I do it, once we've done this, we can. And I would like, I'm not against, I don't think this one, this has nothing to do with that or anything against the design. I just feel like I'd be dealing with.
Has anybody else had any comments out? And we, when we discussed this last month, we had a pretty full house, and, uh, so we showed it to the public here as well, and I never got any, um, requests for anything. Has anybody else had any input for me? Not since the last meeting, you know? I did previously, but. You're not there. Yeah, not since the last meeting, I'm.
So do you want to request? No one to say anything. What are your suggestions?
I would just suggest, I, I don't know how many people are aware that we're really looking to rethink. If they were here in the meeting, they probably don't realize we're doing that, and that was kind of his response was, um, that, you know, maybe we need to put it out there, or they're being social media, whatever. Get feedback before we take a final vote. Um, and like I said, I'm not against it as I'm looking at it. I think it's perfectly fine, what we're trying to do. I just think if we do it without getting input, then we're missing an opportunity to give the community of offense of the present. Uh, and honestly, I had not thought we could do that, because I got that email early meeting, and that was, you know, our bad for not thinking along that line in the process. It's never been registered, but also, but I think it would be an easy thing to get some feedback.
I don't say anything, I don't say anything at all. I mean, and keep the community, and people, so then I think that might be heard.
But we discussed it last night. Did anybody watch, watch the meeting or respond to it? We usually get negative stuff.
Yeah, or any, yeah, just not graphic, you know?
And it was, uh, so his comments were not negative at all. He didn't say anything against the design, or anything in nature, it was just, was there an opportunity for input from the public? All of a sudden, I mean, they can kind of talk to us, but. No, I didn't. I'm not throwing a name out there, because I don't want to, I don't want to do that. But, um, but I just made a comment that he hasn't been put out there, so he can see that. Um, and I don't, honestly, I may be hoping I can show the people in the room, even on Zoom, I don't know how good of a picture you would have had of what that looks like, on Zoom meeting.
So are you, are you kind of asking to kind of advertise it first?
But I want to just, you know, our social media, get feedback. You know, get feedback, you can say that, and just, maybe something would be very fine.
This is the second reading. Well, you have to give us one last.
But again, that's just, I'm just proposing that we table it, but I have to, it's, it's a council decision to do that. I just don't like.
Are you making a motion?
I, I made a motion to table it, until we can public feedback. And I, but I have to, 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 to. And again, that's, you know, that's not, I didn't think about whether we could put this out or not.
Hello.
Oh, Mike. Well, we're looking to the history.
Hold on, I'm telling.
Want to probably put here.
Michael, second. Erica. Erica.
Now, it's, okay, this is what, okay.
Okay, seizure, she sees your text.
I'm, I'm saying this, just, may I say that, but.
Say it again. You can't make a motion, you table it, because we've already made a motion for the second reading.
Okay.
Yeah. It has to be voted on, because you've already motioned and seconded on it. It should have been brought before the second reading. Okay.
We're getting all the Robert's.
Yeah, you can come up and say it. Come up there and lay it on it. Uh, Mr. Calvert's gonna come up and kind of explain why. Okay.
Um, yes, uh, you, you would need to have made a motion and to, uh, table this a second before, unfortunately, that you made a motion, and it was seconded to vote on this. You made a motion, and you had a second to vote on this. You have to vote on it, um, before you can do anything else. After it's voted on, you can make a motion, uh, to do something else like, um, postpone it or, or to, or table it. But once you make a motion and you second the motion, you have to vote on it. Um, I'm not trying to be, to pour rain on the parade, I'm just trying to.
You're keeping the sauce straight there with our Robert's.
Yeah, I mean, because you, you have a council person that made a motion, you had a council person that seconded it. They have to get, uh, their vote.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I didn't mean to, to jump in there, rain on the parade. And the thing I said was meant more as a, uh, thing, uh, it wasn't meant to, again, also make a judgment. I'm just saying you have the, the, the brand that's over there and the seal, and sometimes I think citizens get, uh, confused about what the, what they are, and that's the only reason why I'm bringing that up, not to make any kind of comment on what should be done. Uh, so I'll get off here now, and I apologize. I just want to make sure you have to do about the first and second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the citizens did have an input in the, uh, the brand, which, um, is something that goes, I don't know, which is something that goes out to the public, that forces us to help for our inner city. Um, our seal is more of an internal thing. It's not necessarily something that we get public input on. It's a seal that's for the internal government, internal for our, um, for all of our official documents and things like that. We can, it needs to be sealed, um, so that's where that helps us. So we did get public input on our brand, um, but this is an internal government thing. So with that, um, since we had a first, um, uh, motion and a second, do we have any other discussion on that? And we'll go ahead and take the votes. All those in favor of approving the seal, um, reading 2023-04, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye. Okay, all that's close. Okay, so it passes. Okay, and that passed by. All right, so we will move on. We have no new business, and then now we've got our department heads reports. And you see those in the packets, so I'm not gonna take the time to read those. You know, it's kind of everything, kind of tracking, I mean. All that, um, where maybe not, please, before, might not be as boring, but it may bring a little excitement to the, to the, to the meeting, but, uh, we're gonna go ahead and forego that as well. Um, but if you have any questions, there are any questions that maybe we can take to the department heads, or we have one department head here with us that you have any questions for.
Yeah, I do have a quick question. Um, I know a couple people asked me about the situation with the SROs of the schools. Uh, and I just wanted to see if you did, uh, I know you're, we're shorthanded now, so there's been some shuffle around, and I just wondered if we could get an explanation of how the SROs are being covered, what that looks like currently.
Right, there's, so we cover three schools, uh, Liberty Elementary, Middle School, and High School. And currently, we have one SRO at the high school that is floating between those, making care of whatever criminal matters come up. And then the road officers are also supplementing that coverage, um, when they're not, um, doing walkthroughs and hanging out if anything needed. Just a quick explanation of that is, I have 11, um, patrol officers, three officers, usually assigned to a school. So out of those 11, I have seven vacancies right now. Well, not vacancies, I, I have one on my due, I have two in training, and then four vacancies. So that's where we are at this point. So if you, if you do the math on that, I have three patrol officers covering 24/7. So I couldn't take two of those three and put them in a school, the rest of the city uncovered. So right now, those, those people in the school get the same picture as everyone else in the city.
Thank you.
So we're gonna introduce this week, and hopefully, we might be able to, uh, fill those slots.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're gonna move on to our city administrative reports, and my people. Please come back on.
Well, you got, you got back to me a lot faster than, than I expected, and I, um, yes, uh, I don't, uh, some of the things that, that the chief was talking about, that we are, we, uh, finding it very, uh, very urgent that we are, uh, getting together and coming up with some ways, not only to, uh, attract qualified employees, but also retain them, and we will be doing some roundtables to try to come up with some ideas. Uh, and anyone on the council, feel free to join us, uh, because all ideas are good ideas. Not all ideas might be implemented, but they're all good ideas, and, um, we're looking to do that. Uh, we did start initially by, uh, raising the minimum hiring, uh, amount, uh, to put us on the same level as, uh, other communities. But, uh, like I was saying, I can't, beyond that, I'm not going to be able to match dollar for dollar a lot of these other larger towns. So we have to be much more creative on things we can do, uh, for, for the chief and captain to retain those type of, uh, employees that, uh, Liberty deserves and, uh, the chief and, uh, the captain deserve. So we'll be working on that, uh, in the coming months to, to come up with some, some solutions there. Let's, uh, I guess, start with the, uh, you said, the administrators' report. And, uh, the first thing, as you see on there, is the new city hall, and things, uh, are going great, I think. So far, it's going very smoothly. We've had some positive feedback when people have come in there. In fact, even today, a lady, as she was leaving, she showed us that we were number one. Uh, she, uh, she, uh, made sure that we knew that we were number one as she left. Um, but, uh, but other than that, uh, we, like I said, we've had some, some great feedback about, uh, um, feeling, uh, much nicer in there, much more, uh, productive, and, uh, uh, people just, just like the feel of it a lot better. Um, but, uh, we still have some things to do. For instance, making ADA compliant is important to us, and, uh, uh, we will be, uh, initiating the ADA committee in April to discuss some, uh, some of the areas that we need to look at, uh, to make the, uh, the new city hall. to discuss some, uh, some of the areas that we need to look at, uh, to make the, uh, the new city hall ADA compliant. Um, economic development, uh, we did have that kickoff meeting with retail strategies and had a great turnout for that from, uh, the mayor and council. And, uh, just to let you guys know, uh, we will be having a site visit, um, coming up and I think it is in May, early May, maybe late April, if they're not sure, it's between two, and I'll get back to you the exact date when we have it ironed out, but it's gonna be either late April, early May. And please, any, uh, council member that wants to be a part of that, let me know, they'll be coming here. We will be touring the town and looking at different areas, discussing with them what it is as a city you guys are looking to bring in. Uh, downtown does not just mean the core commercial development district, it means the entire downtown, uh, which is a much bigger area, as well as peripheral area outside of downtown. Uh, what you guys are looking to bring in those places and, uh, and any ideas you might have. So, uh, I will definitely get out the date to you. And, uh, please, if you have any interest at all, be part of that, walk around with us and, and, uh, you know, bounce ideas back and forth, so they have an idea, uh, when they go out there and market us. Uh, and this is an organization that's, uh, uh, very, uh, very tuned into, uh, and has, uh, great connections with corporate heads, not just of individual, like businesses, but corporate businesses, corporations that own several different brands. And, uh, so getting your intake is invaluable during this, this meeting, so when it, uh, when we have the date in stone, I'll get it out to you guys. Um, with the grants, uh, we also had a new EPA kickoff with our, uh, with our, um, our contractor, TerraCon. And, uh, they will be getting an outreach coordinator, that's something that we find is important. Make sure that we have town halls and different, uh, community outreach functions so that everyone in the town knows what's happening with this, but also, uh, able to communicate with us about areas that we may be able to use this, uh, you know, this grant on, because the point of this grant is to do phase one and phase two environmental assessments. And I'm not sure if you, uh, if everyone's familiar with that, but a, a phase one is generally like a desktop, uh, environmental. You can kind of just look up the property and it'll give you an idea on whether or not you need to do a phase two. Phase two, uh, costs significantly more money and those are areas that you have a pretty good idea could potentially need cleanup or, or things like that. But the point is, is to make sure that we get out to the community and find any potential ideas that they may have, uh, that we're not thinking of, so we want to make sure that we, uh, have this, uh, outreach coordinator in place as soon as possible. And we'll get, uh, some, uh, some meetings out to the public so that they know what's going on, as well as, uh, can, can voice, uh, where they think some of these, uh, EPA funds could be spent. And, uh, with the skip grant, with that's the extra R per infrastructure money, everybody's still waiting. Uh, we keep hearing it's any day and, you know, actually hopefully that any day will be, uh, a day, but right now, unfortunately, everyone is still waiting on, on decisions here. Um, the water meters, uh, we started receiving the radios and, uh, as everyone here is probably already aware, we've started, uh, installing them. Uh, you know, we, we did receive about half of the radios we need that go along with the meters for them to be read. Uh, and so we thought it was best to go ahead and start installing mainly because, you know, uh, like I've written here, the original intent was we were gonna get the meters, get the radios, install them all in. Unfortunately though, with the supply chain issue, we just don't know when this is going to be. It can be, uh, here, there, it could be like we get seventy-five percent for twenty percent, it could take much longer. So we thought it was best, best to at least get started with what we had. Uh, it was a quick thing, uh, I would have liked to have been able to give the public a little bit more time about we, uh, to know this, but we wanted to make sure that we let them know that it was possible at any time. And once we got these in, uh, we wanted them to work on them. They were able to work on them and, uh, and get them in fairly quickly and with very few issues, which is really great for the work they've been doing. Um, there were a couple of issues where they went back and, and fixed the work they did, but they went back and no extra cost and, and fixed, uh, fixed those issues. Um, with outreach, uh, I began an administrator's town hall, called it Donuts and Coffee with the Administrator. Uh, it's gonna be monthly, it's gonna be like next week, uh, the next Thursday. Uh, it's the week after this meeting on the Thursday. Um, the last one I did, uh, was about fiber and internet. And I tell you, I was really, uh, taken aback by the, uh, the people who showed up and their real interest in it and the, uh, and the, um, efforts they're still bringing forward. Uh, so much so that, uh, we created a committee out of them and they are still helping me, uh, do a lot of work in this area. Uh, they're reaching out to, uh, their elected officials, writing letters, things like that. And even one, uh, member in the, uh, committee was on the news, talking about this very issue a few days back. If anyone wants to see that, I had, I think I have it saved on my phone, so I can forward it to you. It was just a quick, uh, couple minute thing when they were talking about money, grant money coming to the upstate regarding fiber and internet. Uh, so it's been a really great thing, uh, we are looking to have a, a, a meeting next week with, uh, um, I think it's Upcountry Fiber, uh, it was, uh, helped with this committee as well as, uh, um, uh, Count, uh, uh, Mr. Hyatt, uh, Davey Hyatt, and, uh, looking forward to that. I think it's going to be a great meeting and it really will bring attention to some of the issues we obviously have, our community does, with, uh, internet. So I'm looking forward to that. Uh, the next one is going to be, uh, more exciting, it's about litter. So anyone that wants to come, feel free, but, uh, it was brought to my attention, there are certain areas that, uh, the, the citizens do seem to have an issue with litter being thrown out of, uh, vehicles right around their area because we do have a lot of, uh, even though we're a city, we have a lot of, uh, non-habitant areas. We have a lot of woods, we have a lot of things like that, and, uh, they make it very easy for people, uh, to throw things out of their vehicle and not be noticed, so there's certain areas that have been brought to my attention and we wanted to go over those more. So that will be the next, uh, meeting. But again, the first one was great, I'm looking forward to the second one, and there'll be specific subjects for every meeting. Uh, but again, it will be, uh, every Thursday the week after the council meeting and it'll be six to seven. Again, the next one's expected to be March twenty-third. Pickens County HMP, Pickens County's updated Hazard Mitigation Plan, of which Liberty is a part. As a member of the committee, I'm working with them on Liberty's behalf. Uh, and if anybody interested in more information regarding this project, please go to pickenscountyhmp.com. Basically, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is a countywide, uh, mitigation plan for all types of possible, uh, um, destructive events, whether they be man-made or natural. And so we want to make sure that any potential disasters that could befall Liberty, uh, that they're in that plan for potential mitigation funds, if we needed to have something done, uh, and updated. For instance, one of the things we're talking about for Liberty would be, uh, generators for certain areas so that if we do have a natural disaster, that we have, uh, generators that can back up power to, uh, essential areas and, and things like that. So there are mitigation funds and, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, if there's something that Liberty needs, that's part of the, uh, county HMP that, uh, we're, we have a seat at the table. So that's going on right now, and again, please go to that website and, uh, and look it up, not just to you guys, but anybody in the county that, that's interested and should go there and take a look at what's going on there. It's a really good website. And the last thing is the, uh, Pickers Regional Joint Water System, uh, they begun, uh, well, we, because we're part of that, have begun working with a contractor with Har- called Harper. Uh, they're right now testing, uh, water filtration systems at Lake Kiwi, uh, which is really great. It shows that things are moving forward, uh, we're really looking forward to having this in place in about four to five years hopefully. Uh, but everything is proceeding well and on schedule. Um, with that, uh, I'll open the fourth, any questions?
No questions, all this. You're very thorough, Michael, if you have any questions.
Okay, well, lively bunch today, okay. All right, we'll go, we'll, we'll ride on over to finance today. This is the one I love, you know, because, uh, I'm the finest guy. Well, eventually though, we will be getting reports from, from Christie, she, uh, as we know, is training, uh, and she's learning very well and very quickly, um, and everything. But, uh, want to make sure that she's still doing that in her first year and, and so, uh, unfortunately, everyone stuck with me doing the, uh, uh, the, uh, finance report. Um, going through the budget, uh, the first thing I'd like to go through, of course, is Department four hundred, which is actually, it says general government, but that's administration, uh, to all of us. Um, if you look at where we should be, which right now is about thirty-three point three three percent, we're two-thirds of the way through the year, right now, we're at about twenty-five point zero five with a- administration. There are a couple of reasons why that's low, I mean, as you can see on here, um, you know, we have had a workers comp claim, which really shouldn't be under administration, Christie's researching that and, uh, so, so is Bailey, and, uh, and we're gonna find out where that needs to be, uh, uh, moved to, which would, uh, which would change things as well as, um, you know, we, uh, we have an election cost as well that added to our, um, our cost. But when you add in, uh, certain things that we weren't expecting, which we will be, uh, um, looking at in the upcoming budget, um, you know, the increase of travel and training, which will have, some will be reimbursed, increased utility cost, of course, because of the economy that's going on right now. When you look at these things, we really are more, uh, in line with about thirty-two point, uh, two-three, much closer and much more in line with what we would expect, um, and what we will be looking at to do with, with, uh, with subsequent budgets. Um, when you go to, uh, police, um, you know, police, they're, they're pretty healthy, uh, the chief, the captain, I think, do a, do a great job, uh, uh, with their budget, I mean, they're well within their budget range. Uh, they're up at thirty-seven point zero three, well above the thirty-three percent that we would expect. And I don't see there's anything in there that would cause any kind of need for attention. And again, if there's any questions, anyone on the council has with more specificity, for instance, with the admin in some of these areas, please come and talk to me, uh, you don't have to set a point, walk in, sit down and ask me what these are about, and we'll go through them line by line in more specificity, um, at any time if you have questions, uh, regarding any of these expenses. Um, now going to, uh, Public Works, now Public Works is always fun because again, as you're aware, we have a few things in here that normally shouldn't be in there. Um, taking that into account, if you, uh, again, if you look at a budget, uh, you know, the capital outlay shouldn't, uh, be there, but it is counted towards it. If you add that back in as well as, um, the trash truck, um, under miscellaneous, um, when we took the trash truck out of, uh, Public Works' expense and, and put it outside of that, it really shouldn't belong in there, and so it's, as you can see, miscellaneous wasn't budgeted for that. Uh, but if you take those two and you put them back together and you are looking at pretty much a thirty-three percent, again, right where they should be, um, if you take these, uh, two things that really shouldn't be in there and, uh, take those out. And again, uh, you're looking at, uh, apologize, uh, the Public Works, you were looking again at the capital outlay and at miscellaneous, which is, again, as you can see, it's budgeted for twenty-five hundred, but the physical activity was one hundred and thirty thousand, that's the trash truck payments. So you put those back, uh, in there or take those out and we're at thirty-three percent for Public Works, which is, uh, which is again, right in line with where we want to be. Uh, and with recreation, um, there's two things in there that actually, and, uh, um, actually Christie's working on those this week, is the maintenance of facilities, which is Rosewood, where you guys are right now, as well as insurance claim adjustment, has to do with Rosewood. Those things were really supposed to be part of hospitality money and not part of the recreation department. So again, you take those, put those back in there and you end up with recreation at thirty-three point five percent. Uh, again, uh, what I'm trying to point out here is if you look at some of these expenses that don't belong, these are things that should be worked out with the new software system that we're bringing in, that we can take these things, unfortunately, under Tyler, this is where they have to go. But what we're trying to work out with Harris is not have them in areas they don't belong, that confuse you and possibly the public as to what is actually happening in these departments. And then, uh, water, um, we're, uh, um, at a healthy thirty-one point four percent with water right now. It will be higher because maintenance of equipment and the enormous, uh, agreement are being worked out with Christie right now. Uh, those will be, uh, will be, uh, rectified and next month I'll show you the, uh, the difference between water now and water next month. And wastewater, uh, within our budget right now, we're at a healthy forty-seven point four seven percent, which is, uh, the healthiest of, of all the, the areas. That was a lot to get through, so I do apologize, now I'm just going kind of quickly, so please, uh, come back with any questions you have on, on any of this.
If they've got more questions, um.
Please stop by, I mean, this is a lot of detail and I want to be able to explain it, uh, uh, much better to you, anyone that has, uh, you know, any interest in the more, the more, uh, the details of what I'm explaining. Uh, but again, some of these things, uh, we do have a new treasurer and, and she's learning and there are some things that she's realizing are in areas that she needs to rectify and we're taking care of that and, uh, she's doing a great job. But, uh, again, next month, uh, especially with water, uh, you should see, uh, a much higher percentage than where you are right now.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes all the city administrator and department head reports. Now onto city council reports, um. Councilor Shinni. Okay, councilmember Rayville. Councilmember Whitaker.
Matthew to report.
Councilmember Mazzin.
I had some constituents asking about the playground as far as the mulch, with the toddlers who can't walk that well, they're getting splinters, so I haven't approached without putting maybe rubber compounds down to kind of make it easier, just want to present that.
Thank you. All right, councilmember Powell.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Paget.
Nothing to report.
All right. Okay, well, at this time, we are gonna be moving into, um, executive session, entering into executive session. Um, and before I, let's see, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion to en- enter executive session pertaining to these couple of topics. Section thirty dash four dash seventeen A two, contractual real estate and legal matters. Discussion and negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements to propose sale or purchase of property, the receipt of legal advice or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege. Um, and that is, uh, concerning the legal updates regarding building codes. And then section thirty dash four dash seventeen A one, personnel matters, discussion of employment, employment compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline or release of an employee, a student or a person regulated by a public body or the appointment of a person to a public body. And that is under, um, city administration. So do I have a motion to enter executive session pertaining to these two topics?
I make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Rayville, do I have a second?
I'll stand up.
And I have a second by councilmember Powell, any discussion? Right, all those in favor of moving into executive session, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that's unanimous. Okay, we are, um, I'm asking for a motion now to exit executive session.
Make a motion to exit.
Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Powell, do I have a second?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I have a second by councilmember Paget, do I have any discussion? Right, all those in favor of exiting executive session, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that's unanimous. We are now out of executive session and moving back to our regular session, where I will ask for a motion, we did discuss this personnel matter, um, that I explained going into, into executive session, and so now I will ask for a motion that we approve and accept the proposal for our administrator's contract. And I need a, a motion on that.
Sure, I have a motion.
Okay, and that, okay, I got a motion, sorry. I got a motion by councilmember Sheenland. Do I have a second?
I'll stand up.
Okay, and I have a second by councilmember Rayville. And I'll start off, I'll just say, um, before I ask for discussion, that this is, um, based on what we discussed, any of the changes that we discussed in the executive session. So do I have any discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting and approving this contract with these stipulations, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so the passes six to nine. All right, now, do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, all right, say it. All right. Any discussion? Any discussion? Oh, yes. Yes, I do, so, quick discussion, um, I did want to ask, uh, chief to come and speak on the record um, to clarify what we were discussing earlier, um, can you just speak up? All right, speaking of, speaking to this man.
Regarding SRO.
Yes, this was an advice to the SRO.
I, I just, yeah, I wanted to say with this, the staffing issues with the police department, this is not, um, solely a Liberty issue, this is an issue with the, really the entire nation. Every police department I know, my sheriff's office I know, one or four committees, I know, shorthanded, um, in agencies that were never, had, or never had openings, have openings now, and, um, it's affecting every, everyone in every agency. I just wonder, I didn't know that, it's not just a Liberty problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so...
Was that the motion?
Yes, I had the motion and then so...
Who's second?
Who's second? Uh, I had a motion, oh wait, no, that was... Okay, a motion to adjourn, hey, I have a second. Okay, um, any discussion, uh, than what we just had? Okay, all those in favor of adjourned, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.